Thank you. I want to welcome everybody to the Roy City Council meeting we have tonight. This is June 1st, 5:30. We appreciate your attendance. Want to recognize that we have Councilmember Saxton with us tonight. We have Councilmember Burrell. We have Councilmember Wilson. We have Councilmember Jackson. And we have Councilmember Paul. We have a full quorum tonight. Again, we appreciate you joining us. We've asked Councilmember Paul if he will go ahead and lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Joe?
Good evening and welcome to council meeting. Feel free to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Feel free to stand and give proper salute and join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paul, thank you for leading us in that. Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of consent items. First, I'm going to kind of break these up just a little bit, then I'll ask for a vote. This is the approval of the May 4th, 2021 Roy City Council meeting and the May 4th, 2021 Roy City work session. Do I have any corrections, comments about those? Any comments? Okay. I think you received, Morgan, my inputs, okay, in terms of those. Okay? And we also have the swearing-in of the new police chief, Matthew Gwen. Council, this decision is a review and consent. So when we vote on that, this motion, then obviously you're approving the approval of the new police chief. So with that...
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent items along with bringing on a new police chief.
Okay. I have a motion then to approve the consent items. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And Jan is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Now guess what? We appreciate it. Matt, go ahead and introduce our new police chief. And we ask you that sometime if you would introduce your family and friends that are here. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, we've been going through the process of hiring a new police chief after Chief Carl Moreno retired. We went through a couple of rounds of interviews and strongly feel that Matt Gwen would do the city very well. And he's already kind of jumped in and taken the lead. I'm fully confident in his abilities to lead that department to the next level. So, thank you for the approval of Matt Gwen. So at this time, we're going to do the oath of office and make it official.
Yeah. This is the oath of office, so please, join us. You just got a camera. Oh, I see one coming up. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, Rachel, I'm going to repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Matthew Gwen.
Having been elected or appointed...
Having been elected or appointed.
...to the office of Chief of Police...
To the office of Chief of Police.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
Support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties.
...of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I think there's rubber here that a family member's going to pin on.
If that's okay, Mayor.
I think that's perfect. Wonderful. Thanks, all. Hi, Shelley.
Got four girls. One's in Houston. She's working. This is Alexis, Ashlyn, and...
Perfect. Welcome. Congratulations. Hey, Matt, before you sit down, would you mind, you've got lots of people here that are here for you, would you just make maybe a couple of comments to them?
Yeah, I'm going to pull a Danny Hammond if I don't get it out quick. Seventeen years here. And at no point did I ever think I was actually going to be in this position. So, I've had some phenomenal support. I've had a lot of encouragement. And I'm looking forward to a successful, at least next few years. They've been coming out and have been vocal about their excitement. And I'm hoping and expecting we're going to get to do some great things together. So, I didn't prepare anything. That's about as formal as I can get. We have nachos downstairs, so the sooner you get through your meeting, the sooner you can come have a bite with us. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Perfect. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Council, do you have comments?
I appreciate your service and I appreciate the support of the department behind you. It's awesome to see you come and welcome your new chief. That's wonderful. And family and friends. So, look forward to working with you and keeping the city going.
And keeping it in Roy City because your in-laws grew up here, too.
Well, Chief, it's great to have you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your efforts. Okay? Well done. Thank you. Okay, Council? We do have the public comment period. If you have something you would like to share with us tonight, we'll go ahead and let some people exit.
They just come for the nachos.
I think they did. By the way, you did hear that invitation, Council, downstairs. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Hey, we now have public comment period. Anything you would like to talk about, anything you want to bring up, please join us at the mic. All we need is your name and address. Anybody? Kevin?
Good to be back.
It's good to be back.
Kevin Holmer. I live in Roy at 53 Main Street, South 4000 West. Couple of things. The IADU, which I believe is House Bill 82, is that correct?
Eighty-two.
That's correct. Goes past just this last spring by the legislature. One thing I would ask the Council to remember is all the provisions in that bill, almost all of it is the city council may require permits. It's not a must.
That's right.
So, I would encourage you to use a great deal of restraint as you consider whether or not we should assess more permits and more licensing for businesses in our city. I would encourage you to not do that. I'm not a fan of businesses, or sorry, cities permitting businesses. Just me.
Okay.
The other is about, I appreciate the discussion that was had about the budget for the city. Specifically about the costs for the salary costs in the city, whether or not it's emergency services, parks and rec, or administrative staff. I've kind of been through those discussions with other city councils in the area, and you're in competition with them. When we say that we have people that are interested in going somewhere else, most of the time it's due to salary. So, I would encourage the city to find a way not to do just yearly merit increases. And I appreciate the discussion about the comparative salary increases. But rather than have that be just once every three years, sure, let's do the study every three years to figure out what the other cities in the area are paying their employees. But let's take that number and every year give the comparative salary increase in addition to the merit salary increase. Do everything that we can to keep the good employees here. I'm retired now, but in a previous life, I had a lot to do with hiring and staffing multimillion-dollar budgets for companies that I worked for. Salaries are generally about 50% of those budgets compared with the hard costs like cars and buildings and all those things. And I can guarantee you, you know, we can find out what the numbers are, but it costs a whole lot less money, as you know, our department heads here have found out, a whole lot less money to retain people that we like, the good workers that we like, by in part paying them enough money for what they're doing here. So, retaining the people, then to go out and find new people, recruiting them, having to train them, those costs are much higher than paying a good salary and retaining them.
That's right.
As much as I don't like spending the money, I think this is one of those areas that it would be very good and appropriate for the city to spend money on salaries.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for your input.
Good comments. I appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to share a thought with us? Okay. Seeing them, we'll go out of the public comment period. We do have a couple of presentations. Andy, you're going to talk to us about our annual requirement of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Mayor, I'll move down here so you can see me better.
That's great. Thank you.
State law requires that we do this every year, have a training on the Open Public Meetings Act. So, what I've done, I've prepared a synopsis for each of you, rather than giving you the state code, which is kind of hard to decipher for anybody. Okay? So, this should make it a little easier. I'll go through a few things here. This act was created by the Utah State Legislature, and it said that we should take our deliberations, they should be in public, a meeting rather than private. When does it apply? It's whenever the council convenes, or excuse me, convenes with a quorum present and if we're here doing the public's business. So, at any time that that comes into play, then we have to have that open meeting. Now, what's a quorum? We've got to have two council members, anything, excuse me, anything with more than two council members and the mayor. That runs us into trouble. If we start discussing things, we have a problem. So, it doesn't apply to chance meetings or social gatherings. Doesn't apply when we go to the Utah League of Cities and Towns meetings. Doesn't apply if we were at some kind of conference, if there was an investigation, school plays, funerals, things like that, and we're all there. We don't have to do any kind of notice provisions for that. If, it can apply, though, when we have our executive sessions, our work sessions, our closed meetings, plan, commission, some committees it does apply to. If we have an ad hoc committee that's only just providing some recommendations and isn't taking final action, we don't have to put out a public notice on that. So, those are the typical situations that we have to have it. There are times when we can have closed meetings, but that's specific. It's defined by state code. I just have a brief list here of about six different items that are put on there. So, when we talk about character and competency of individuals, that's when we go into those closed meetings. Collective bargaining is something we don't do. We don't have unions here, so that doesn't really come up. If we're talking about purchase sale, lease of property, and we're looking at appraisals or if we're concerned about making the best deal possible, we can't really be talking about that in a public meeting. That's all out there for different people. Wouldn't be appropriate. We wouldn't get the best deal possible. So, in those situations, we can have that meeting. Deployment of security, investigations of criminal misconduct, we can have those in a closed meeting also. Our regular meetings, though, we have to have a 24-hour notice. We also have to publish that once a year at the beginning of the year. We can have special meetings. Those special meetings, we just give a 24-hour notice, and then we have our emergency meetings, too, which we give the best reasonable notice package. In our meetings, written minutes of the recordings, and recordings are required. In our closed meetings, they are too, except under certain circumstances, and that's usually character and competency of individuals. And in that situation, we don't have to keep the minutes. What we do is the mayor has to sign an affidavit saying that it was conducted for those purposes. So, we always have to be careful when we have one of our closed meetings that we don't talk about any topic other than specifically what we can. So, if we get off of that, we can get into trouble. The requirements for closed meetings, those all have to be started with a roll call vote. We have to state the reason for it and the location, and then we have to have a two-thirds vote to go in it. So, it's a little different than some of the other things typically we would do. I think I mentioned that, oh, at the meeting, yeah, we have to list everybody who's there. The mayor does a great job of this. We also have to list all the council members that are there and then all the council members that aren't present. We can't approve ordinances, resolutions, contracts, none of that can be done in a closed meeting. And we can't talk about it, and we can reach recommendations, but the final action has to take place out here in a public meeting. So, if we run into that situation with personnel actions before, where we've come to a conclusion that we haven't had to come out and take final actions, usually things get resolved. One of the things we can't talk about in the, we can't interview anyone for an elected position in a closed meeting. So, I think some of you have been involved before in meetings where we have to do that interview right here in public. And it seems kind of awkward because while we're doing this meeting, somebody else who's applying for the job can just be sitting right back here in the audience. And, you know, they can watch the whole procession all day long, and that's happened before. So, but that's just something that we have to deal with. That's the way the code's written. One thing I might tell you about, too, that's with our closed meetings, we're not supposed to discuss what happens in those closed meetings outside of that meeting. Now, and let me preface that a little bit. We can't talk to anybody about that closed meeting except all of us who are involved in it. So, technically, though, if after that meeting was done, you could talk about it amongst yourselves with anybody who was a participant in there. And so, maybe somebody who's the subject of that meeting was in there, too. You could actually talk to them. We could discuss that closed meeting a week later, a day later, 10 hours later. We could have individual discussions about that. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that. But it's when you start talking to somebody who wasn't part of that meeting about it that creates a problem. So, you have to be careful about that. We've run into that problem a little bit. What's interesting with state law, though, is that they don't put a penalty for that or address what happens when you go outside and talk to somebody else. So, we can't, you can't charge anybody with a crime for doing that, but it's an ethical consideration. So, they could come up on an ethics charge, which isn't a criminal matter, but we can always have...
I have a question about that. There isn't a misdemeanor associated with that because we were just giving a presentation to the sewer board that talked about discussing public meeting information outside of a public meeting, that it could be a misdemeanor.
It's not.
Okay.
And what's happened, and I've gone over with Dave Church, is we've actually run into that situation before. So, what's unique for violations of the Open and Public Meetings Act, that is a class B misdemeanor, okay? But when you look at this specific thing, they don't have anything in the code.
Maybe that's...
It talks about conversations outside, disclosing that. So, that's where you run into it being an ethical thing. So, we have looked at, we have run into that situation before, and it's interesting how to treat it. Can you go, hey, this isn't right, but okay. It doesn't specifically call that out in the code. Where do we go? We take it to an ethics issue. Now, violations of, well, if we took a final action in a closed meeting that we aren't supposed to, then we run into a situation where anybody who wants to file a complaint about that, they have 90 days to do that. And they can, they can file a suit. The city can be liable for court costs and attorney's fees. Can be enforced, it can be enforced by the Attorney General or any county attorneys, for that matter. Any violations are class B misdemeanors. So, again, that's the problem with the talking outside. It doesn't really address talking outside of it. So, and disclosure of information that's discussed in a closed meeting, it could also be a violation of grand law. So, typically, everything that's discussed in there is protected. Protected records of the minutes that are done at those meetings, that's protected. So, we have two different areas where you can run into some problems, not just the ethics violation that could be a crime situation. And then I have on here, I mentioned something about electronic meetings. I think that was more initially when I first prepared this sometime, that it allows council members, under the Open and Public Meetings Act, you don't necessarily have to be here to participate. You can participate electronically. So, that's all I have. If you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer those questions.
Council, any questions?
And then I tell you, if you have any questions like that, please feel free to contact me. And in some other reading that I've done talking about the city attorney's role, I'd just like to bring up one thing that I think's really helpful for us. When we have council meetings, there may be questions that you see or you may anticipate coming up. All the city attorneys and some of the literature I've read, what they say is a great thing to do, is feel free to call me. And you can call me in advance because it's really quite difficult for us sometimes to answer a question, you know, spur of the moment, right there, where we don't have a chance to research it. So, there's that temptation to shoot from the hip. Some things we may know right off the top of our head, but if there's an interesting issue that's coming up, boy, there's nothing wrong with giving me a call in advance and saying, hey, Andy, what's the legality on this? Can we do this? Can we not? You know, I'm more than happy to do that, and some of you do that, and I really appreciate it. So, I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate the input. Okay. We do have another presentation, the Roy Water Conservancy District. Who's going to be talking this one? Give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Rodney Banks. I'm the general manager of Roy Water Conservancy District. So, I've, just really quickly, at the opportunity to read the Resolution 21-11 that'll be considered by the Council this evening. First off, I just want to say we very much appreciate the support that is worded in the resolution. And one thing that we would ask that the council consider is that the culinary water be restricted as well to no watering outside between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And there's many reasons for this. One of the reasons is that it helps in uniformity in the messaging that all of us are, you know, putting out there, whether it be us as the Culinary Water Conservancy District, we were based on Water Conservancy District. It really doesn't, you know, piney water, whoever supplies your secondary water, it just really helps in the uniformity in messaging. So, we would respectfully ask that you take that into consideration in your future discussions. But again, we really appreciate this resolution and the support that it gives to us in our efforts for water conservation. Now, why is this important for you folks? Well, the reality is, is that the drought is so extreme this year, we're down about 45, 50% in our normal water supply. So, what is that going to mean? Well, it means that we may run out of water this year, secondary water. So, how that affects you folks is that people may be starting to use culinary water outside. That could affect your supply, you know, however, you know, however that affects you. Anyway, the, so with that, we've also talked with Hooper Water Improvement District. I know one of the concerns is that, is enforcement. And that is a concern that we have as well. And we have a resolution in place at the district that we're able to use in order to enforce our watering guidelines. Hooper Water Improvement District, I understand, talking to their general manager, that they also have that same restriction of no watering between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM with their culinary water supply. So, if there is a little bit of concern there, Hooper Water already does that, the, you know, the concern that was brought to me with enforcement, just as a note, we've had this resolution in place for eight years at the district, and in those eight years, we've only had to fine two people the $50 fine, which is the second violation. We typically don't have to take it to the level of the third violation. Now, this year may be an exception to that. We are serious in that so far the trend shows that our customers are using more water than we have a supply for. So, unfortunately, October 1st may be coming a little sooner. It could be coming September 1st. We just really don't know. This is, this is an unprecedented drought situation. I know it's a situation where it seems like we're always in a drought. Well, we live in a desert, and there are some realities there. But this year, it is an extreme drought. If you can imagine, in Davis and Weber Counties, Kinnell Company, which is where we get our water from, they haven't seen this in 120 years of data that they have. There's some other comparable years, if anyone remembers, 1977. I do, but I was a little younger then. But that was an extreme drought year as well. But this one is very unique. And what makes it unique is in the snowpack, what unfortunately happened is that the ground was so dry, and this is up in the high elevations, that the snowpack actually absorbed into the ground instead of running off to our reservoirs. So, that means that we have less than a 15% runoff, 15% of normal. Very abysmal. So, anyway, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
Council, questions, comments?
So, I agree. I saw where down in St. George that they changed it to 10 to 8 at night, you can't water. Think that's something that we should do?
Typically, those types of restrictions are in southern Utah, it's because they are so much hotter than we are up here. Right now, between 10 and 6 is what, Utah State University is the university that does a lot of research related to this, and they're still recommending the 10 to 6 restriction.
So, it's hard to tell who has secondary and who has coronary water. I mean, I see people watering in the middle of the day all the time. How do we get the word out to, I mean...
Well, I think where he was headed is if our policy or our resolution mirrors the sub-conservancy districts. And that's what I sent out in the email today, is saying, we need to change our resolution so we're mirroring what they say. So, regardless of who's watering during the day, if anybody's watering during the day, whether it's city water or secondary water, that it is enforceable, whether, you know, if they run across a property that ends up being a city water, they can either kick it to us and let us do it, or they could still pass on a letter, notify us, same thing. I think, see something, say something. If you see somebody watering in the middle of the day, regardless of whatever water they have, bring it to the attention of the city, and we work with the Conservancy District to determine where the enforcement's at.
But don't you think we should restrict it to maybe, you know, not, because I know I have a lot... I have a lot of elderly neighbors, and they're, there's sprinkler people come and set it, and it like waters every other day or whatever. And I just think maybe twice a week, the most?
Yeah, right now, the state puts out a watering guide, and we actually have our own recommendations for watering. Right now, we're actually recommending just once a week. And that's how our situation is. Now, once it does get into the hotter months, we generally say Father's Day. This year might be a little bit sooner. I mean, if it really gets 97 on Friday, like the, you know, the weather forecast says, at that point, you know, it would be twice a week. But it would be twice a week until, you know, say Labor Day, you know, for a significant amount of time, which is, you know, that's more of a restriction than we had before.
I think to your point, and it may be something, Council Harvick Jackson, that needs to be assessed, would be, maybe a lot of people just don't know how to set it. And so, or they just put an auto and it just runs like it did last year, you know, twice, once every other day, and it's never changed. The guidance that's being proposed today suggests is that they don't water between 10 and 6. But that doesn't suggest, and anywhere we're seeing that talks about, well, we really need to be falling back into what's right for the climate in the area, which is once a week and not every other day. And so there's some holes in our process, and I think a lot of people who may not necessarily have the understanding of how the system works, may could use some help to help them to figure out what their system needs to be set to to be able to meet the requirements. And so I know there's some technology out there today that can do that, but I think a lot of people probably don't have that technology, knows exist. And so I think you opened doors to another problem we have about how to get this message out.
And along those lines, Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District, because, you know, they cover five counties, they actually have rebate programs in place. You know, so for instance, the Orbit Beehive Control, which is a fairly popular one, you can get it for about $100, and they'll rebate $50 of that.
The state was actually rebating up to 75. I don't know if that's still up, and I got in on that. And by the time I was done, it cost me less than 20 bucks.
Yeah. A lot of times, it's 50/50, but yeah, you may have gotten, you know, a better one.
Interesting. Okay. Counsel, other comments, questions? Okay, let me just ask, Rodney, appreciate this. I do believe the Roy Water Conservancy District does hire a temporary person in the summer?
That's correct. We have a person that we started probably a month ago, and he goes around, you know, we really are in the business of water education. And that's one of the primary focuses, is that we want to try to educate people. In a situation like this year, you know, maybe the stick is a little bigger, but, you know, the purpose is that he wants to go around and help people understand, you know, what the proper usage is. And he's just one person, you know, as well. But speaking to the uniformity of messaging, so whenever he does come across someone who is using culinary water, he walks away because that's not our jurisdiction. We're not going to step on anyone's toes. And again, that's why we're asking for the uniformity in messaging. That just helps. I think it helps everyone, you know, because we do have, we have almost 11,000 connections, which is, you know, fairly substantial. There's, at a best guess, there's maybe, you know, 2,000, probably less than that, that aren't connected to us, a secondary water, so.
So with that, it sounds like is the individual will go out, if they witness what appears to be a problem, the challenge would be is to make a distinction between whether that's secondary water's jurisdiction or whether it's culinary water's jurisdiction?
Yeah. And to be honest with you, we can do that at the snap of a finger. We have the customer database. It's, you know, it's our customers. And so we know, I mean, we just have to look at our customer database, and we know that if you're connected to us, it's secondary water. If you're not connected to us, as I say, we walk away.
Okay. Interesting.
If you did walk away, is that something you could, like I say, pitch to us and let us know, hey, we observed this, and then?
Yes, very much so.
So we could coexist together?
We feel like we're in this together. If you did adopt a resolution that, you know, the 10, no watering between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM, yes, we would. You know, we would, you know, say hand out the flyer that you want us to hand out or something like that. That's, we don't have a problem with that.
So I have a question in regards to the protocol. You kind of alluded to, they make a first, for the first report, they make a visit to education, and then if they have a second report, then they fine $50, and that's the way the program is currently for this year?
Currently, it is, yes. And just so everyone's aware, we will most likely be considering some more restrictions in our next board meeting. So it may be a little more, a little more heavy-handed.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I remember you said somewhere, it was the third time you actually have the authority to shut it off.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So to your point, Diane, warning, financial penalty on the second, third time, they just turn the valve off and you're off the system. So, I mean, it can go that severe. It sounds like you've not had to do that, but there's been any exceptions?
It is a little tougher with culinary water. I think we may have to step up education and working with them a little bit more. But I think what I propose in the resolution is, we mirror whatever their proposal and guidance is, so we don't have to write it. We just mirror what they say because they're the experts in the water business.
Well, and that's a good point, but Counsel, we've had this conversation because, man lets you tell me otherwise, Rodney, we don't have an ordinance here for this. There is no governance in, not even in this resolution, to what we're talking about as being proposed. And so if you think what we just heard is serious enough, and it surely sounds like it is, then I want you to ask the hard question. Should we be talking about establishing ordinance that allows us to happen? Because you're the law. Today, that resolution as written is simply suggestive. I'm kind of hearing, I've seen your documents, and I surely have seen other documents similar. You have a little bit of authority in your document. You're a district, and you can do just exactly what you said. If you want to shut them off, you can do that. I'm not so sure Roy City can do that today on a watering violation, so we need some...
Well, yeah. You can shut some of the culinary water off because they still have to flush their toilet.
I understand. But you understand the challenge. So, but the point I want to suggest here is, is that, well, let's talk about when we get into the resolution. But I think we just need to make sure we understand exactly what we want to walk out of here with, and how do you want to do that? And that may be a little more complex, so we just need to think this one through.
Are you still selling culinary, I mean, when some of the bills in Roy, do they still get to hook up secondary water?
Yes, they can. So anyone who is connected to just culinary, we've reached out to, you know, a certain number of people, just by word of mouth, people have come in. And we've actually had probably, you know, roughly 600 or so of those connections in the last nine years or so. And so, yes, I mean, if anyone wants to come in, we can connect them to the system. They have the opportunity to do that. People have chosen not to, and others have.
I guess one of the things, I know the legislature's been pushing you a little bit about metering on secondary. Any ideas of where that is?
Yeah, so currently, we have about 878 meters within our district boundaries. So we have a long ways to go, as you can imagine, here, each 11,000, and very expensive, it's very expensive. It really is. But we are chipping away at it, and, you know, that's been a good thing. Weaver Basin's had a wonderful experience with metering and helping people understand their water use. And it makes sense, you know, you really, you know, can't control what you don't know, right?
Yeah, great information. Okay. Counsel, any other questions, comments?
Well, yeah, just a quick one. On this resolution, it's been proposed, we can amend that, right, to say culinary?
Yeah, I mean, we can do some amendment here, in terms of...
Yeah, but right now, we're in a different...
Yeah, we're going to get to that one here to second resolution just yet. Yeah. But I just want to make sure, before we jump into the resolution, is there anything else that Rodney can provide to us, any information that he hasn't?
No, yeah, it's got to be...
Okay, great information. Thank you. I've got notes here, I had no idea, okay? This is a great time.
And anytime you have questions, we'll be reached out.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Excellent, thank you. Counsel, we do have an issue coming, and it appears to be bigger than Dallas. Okay. We have one action item. This one talks about Resolution 21-1 acknowledging the existence of a drought condition and recommending compliance with water restriction measures. Andy, you're going to lead us through this one?
Sure, Mayor. What we did, it's what we were requested to do on this, and we've acknowledged that there is a drought and there's a serious condition that's here in Roy. We have two different districts that apply or provide secondary water for us. Weaver Basin and Roy Water Conservancy District provide that. So in this resolution, we're putting out support for that. We're saying that to the citizens that we should follow the recommendations that they have, and that they also should do what the governor has recommended. Also, we included that there are some things that might be good for the citizens to know. There's a Slow the Flow website that really has some good things with it. It mentions that there is, there's free water checks and free evaluations, and you can go to that, either of those two websites to sign up for that. So that'd be nice for the citizens to know that they could, they could do that. There's also, one of the websites gives you a weekly watering update, so you can check that and you can adjust accordingly. What this doesn't do, and what's been proposed, we don't provide secondary water, but apparently in the land of honey area, they don't have a secondary water source. So it's just our culinary water that's being used in those areas. So if we want to address that area and put some teeth in it where there is, there can be fines and penalties, such as there is with these others, we have to do that by ordinance. Resolutions really set fees, different things to that order, make recommendations, apply, you know, different things like that. So if we want to address the culinary water situation, that going on in the city and using culinary water, we're going to have to do that by an ordinance. So what I'd recommend is that we pass the resolution as is, and then we can look at this, and I wouldn't mind finding out when that next meeting coming up is. It'd be nice if we could, if we deal with the culinary water situation, and we make it similar, because you may have even more strict, more restrictions coming in. So it'd be good to know that before we put together an ordinance that dealt with the culinary water situation.
So my question is, the proposed changes I proposed, would they not be appropriate for a resolution?
I don't think they're appropriate for a resolution. And I, one of the problems I've got, it talks about enjoining, and that, enjoining is a word that's used for injunctions, and I don't think that really is applicable in this situation.
So can we use a different word?
Well, I, what I would recommend is that we leave it how it is, and then we come back with, with an ordinance that covers that.
I appreciate that, and I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way.
But that's your choice, however you want to...
We move slow when it comes to doing ordinances. I can think of many things that we've talked about over the last six months that still hasn't come to an ordinance. We're in the middle of this now. And so I have a little hesitation passing it the way it stands without addressing culinary water. And if that's not the case, then what do we need to do to get an ordinance done?
Well, this doesn't give us any authority to take any type of action on a culinary violation.
So could that be brought up as an ordinance in addition to the proposed changes?
That has to be done as an ordinance, yeah. Which can be done.
I understand that. But the changes, if we get rid of the word enjoin, that's an issue, can we continue on with some of the, and maybe, I don't know if all the council had the chance to read it. I can read what I proposed. I just think if we pass it without talking about culinary water, we've got issues because just as they said, if they start restricting secondary water, what is the people going to do? They're going to grab their hose, hook to their house, and start watering. And so I think it's, we have a strong enough issue that we need to address it. And I appreciate the work that's went into this, but I think we have to get culinary water in there as well.
What are some of the penalties? I think that there are already some automatic penalties that, using culinary, because we have a graduated fee service, so that limits a lot of people. It's kind of already in the program. Do you have just a quick idea, Matt, maybe, you know, what that cutoff is for gallons of usage, and how often people go over that in like the land of honey or whatever?
No, off the top of my head, I don't know the fee schedule, but you're correct. As you use more water, you pay a higher fee. So in the utility department, when you water with culinary water, the typical bill gets up to $300 or so during the summertime when they're watering with culinary.
And what percentage of people in Utah, I mean, in Roy, in Roy, have to have culinary?
You guys, Rodney might know this as well, that the land of honey is probably the biggest group of people without the secondary water. I would say 20% of people don't have secondary water in Roy.
Is that the one you just asked of me?
Yeah. And, but in addition to that, there's also Hooper Water that services a lot of areas in Roy that we have nothing to do with as well. And so some of those residents might, and Rodney addressed that too, culinary Hooper City, so.
So maybe the percentage, maybe what we do is find out what the percentage of people that don't have access to secondary water, not necessarily Roy's secondary, but that would be very important information.
Okay. I mean, the other thing I brought up was not just in talking to Matt, part of my thing also brought up residents, entities, and businesses, because businesses tend to be one of our big offenders as well. And so I added, I mean, I can read, so my proposal was to add something to the title where it says, "Resolution acknowledges the existence of drought conditions." I added, "And establishing consistent water conservation measures for both secondary and culinary water usage in the landscape." Then I also added down at the bottom where it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved on this day, Roy City Council," I use the word enjoins, maybe that's not the right word, "Roy residents and entities, businesses in Roy who use culinary water for landscape watering, to follow the guidelines and restrictions established by Roy Conservancy District and Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District. The Roy City Council is hopeful that all residents follow the conservation goals established by the water districts and will ensure consistent water conservation efforts in the city."
How long would it take to come up with an ordinance or something that would be more specific for the culinary people or to combine that, Andy?
It wouldn't take that long to put that together, but it would be nice to, when is your reading coming up?
June 8th.
So it'd be, it'd be helpful to know what they are doing so we could be consistent. But what I would recommend, if, if you wanted to change this on the now therefore situation, you'd have to, if you took out the word enjoins, but leaves supports and encourages and strongly recommends, then that would work.
I would be okay with that.
I would probably take out what you've added on the resolution part and leave that as is, because we aren't necessarily establishing water conservation measures.
Andy, could you make, could you make the kind of adjustments based on the recommendation that was provided?
If we're going to mirror theirs, we don't know what theirs is yet. We can't really mirror it if we don't know what it is yet.
So, I mean, at the meeting...
Couldn't you mirror it, and if there's changes, ours mirrors theirs? So, I mean, if we are referring back to their guidelines, is that not appropriate to do that?
Yeah, I could look at that.
I think as a resolution, that makes sense, but we can have an ordinance. And more importantly, we have got to have some enforcement. Now, as I mentioned, Rodney provided, he says they've hired a part-time person who's going to scour our city and is going to watch for these issues, provide information, look for offenses, and hopefully we'll find people who are not going to have their water turned off. And I think the approach is there, but just because the district has authority to do that, Roy City is in fact a culinary provider. We have our deep wells. We provide city water, and therefore, it has to be backed by a city ordinance that allows us to do that. And Counsel, you have to direct in that order, who's going to do that? Is it going to be Ross's team as part of the water people? Is it going to be court enforcement that's going to do that? It surely will not be our police department or fire department. And then you've got to give them the resources, the budget, to be able to make that happen. And oh, by the way, it's only going to happen for how long? Just a period of time from what, April 15th to about the 19th of October?
How long is the resolution?
Which could change...
And this resolution will go on the books and stay on the books as long as we want it, but here's the difference. If you really want to make this work, then let's put an ordinance together that's going to put some real meat into this, and then give them the resources that they can make this happen. And then, if you want, Ross and Matt can report back on how well we're doing to help us mitigate this water issue within Roy City, particularly on the culinary. And then, if you want, have a relationship between us that basically says that we're going to work with the districts, both the Weaver Basin District and the Roy Conservancy District, and our team can work to find the best way to be able to share information and make it, make it work so it's affected. and make it, make it work so it's effective. But, but what I'm asking of you then, is the resolution's intent, based on our last meeting, would be is to suggest to the residents, please, listen, we're in a tough spot that I'm sensing, and I think there's some agreement here, we may need to take it to the next level. And if we're going to take it to the next level, let's get an ordinance that you can support with the resources to give direction, and let's get this done. But please don't pass an ordinance that we cannot enforce because it's worthless.
Are we currently seeing that we are having problems with our culinary water? I mean, could we study that before we, I mean, at least know?
Yeah, we could study that. I don't know that we could.
I mean, I, I, study sounds long, but...
I think, I think one of the issues that us and, and secondary has is that you do see people in violation, but you don't know what they're on. And I think when they go out to the enforcement, you go there and they're like, well, this is culinary water, so vice versa. So it takes a little bit of time to try to figure out whose water they are.
It'd be interesting to know how often that happens, though. I mean, I, I'm thinking we're, we're predicting that it happens often, but if it happens twice and we hire a code enforcement person, that, that seems a little over.
Well, that's why I intentionally made some changes to the resolution without proposing an ordinance, because the resolution says this is what we're wanting to do, this is what we're supporting, it's not a thou shalt.
It's basically not enforceable, and, and what I'm saying too is, we have no agreement, no, no letter of agreement with the districts that they're supposed to provide back to us where they find violations that we're responsible for. So to answer the question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're not telling us, Rod, you're not telling us anything about when your team finds the problem, if it's culinary, you're reporting back to anybody in Roy City that we have a problem. And it has.
It'd be nice if we just heard that, and then we'd know. We had 10 possible violations this week, we had 14 possible. We, we don't even know that currently. It'd be nice to know how big of a problem this really is, because there has been a big push, you know, statewide and, yeah.
But I'll tell you, let me just make this clear, and anybody who may be hearing my voice, if Roy Water Conservancy District cuts back and is required to shut off that secondary water the first of September, I'm telling you, I still got a lot of plants going on in my yard that are basically still going to need water before we start to see the temperature.
And where's that water going to come from?
It's going to go from my culinary.
That's why I'm proposing that we add culinary into the resolution.
Well, it's not a bad idea to add it, I'm just saying, give me, give me some tool here we can work with, because it's going to force us to do one thing, and we may be in a bigger problem by what we're doing. When you tell me, and we all heard, 40 to 50% reduction going into this year than where we should be, and we have another bad year next year, I'm concerned that we better start planning on people basically having a lot of burnt out front yards because there may not necessarily be water. And I think the comment that was made a few minutes earlier, we're going to let people drink before we basically feed their lawns. This is a serious issue, and I think we need to have a plan that's going to address the seriousness of this issue.
Could we do like a, a door hanger flyer, put on all the residents, you know, give them the information, because, or is it in the paper? Do you, do you put it in the standard or?
Yeah, so every year.
I mean, I see something in there, you know, when you turn the water on, turn the water off, but...
Yeah. We always include our restrictions and guidelines on that. It's like a half page, and we send that out at the beginning of every year.
I just think if we had like something that put on everybody's door, I don't even know how we, or, I don't know.
No, you could do that.
You've got to get people just don't, I don't think they're aware of it.
Well, I will indicate, Morgan, you have been posting a lot of information dealing with water issues over the years in our magazine. So there has been that, we use that, but we may have to go to the next step. I, I think what we have here, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're close. Andy, could we add a comment that talks to the issue about culinary water? We have a recommendation to do that from the water district, and we have council members thinking that maybe by adding that verbiage in there, maybe it will help strengthen or clarify this resolution. Is that something we can do?
Well, I, I think what we can do is what, what I mentioned before, if we leave in the supports and encourages that starkly recommends and take out the word enjoins, I think we're okay there, okay?
Okay.
And, but that's, it doesn't give us any enforcement.
There's no enforcement.
At all. So to do the enforcement, we're going to have to come back with an ordinance.
That's right.
And then what I, what we need in the ordinance, I can't just create it out of the blue sky and present it in front of the council. The council's going to need to give us some parameters, exactly what they want to do, how they want to enforce it, and where that's going to come from. I can't create that on my own, so.
To me, it's very different to shut off secondary water on a third violation than it is to shut off culinary water.
I totally agree, and that was right in my email. That's why I, I didn't propose an ordinance, I just proposed some verbiage strongly recommending that we support what they've come forth and back.
That's fine, we can support it.
And I think, I think I just heard Andy say we can do that. We can take really the essence of everything that's being proposed here and you can make that adaptation, give us stronger ordinance, or stronger resolution.
Would we need to change the initial portion of the resolution, or you had mentioned maybe the wording there, or if we keep the original wording, would it still mean the same thing because we've talked about culinary in the now therefore? Or what would that first section change?
Yeah, because it says recommending compliance with water restriction measures.
Mayor?
Please.
Sorry, I sit on the board with...
Please, just real fast, your name? I just want to make sure we capture all this.
Chad Zito. I sit on the board with Rodney, I'm the board chair. So I, I think you're overlooking what we really want. We really just want you guys to mirror what we're doing. No watering from 10 to 6, that simple. No watering. If you guys are on board with that, then it makes our job a lot easier, and we're willing to split the cost with our code, code enforcer with you guys.
Okay. And so that really is what it is. I mean, the emphasis here really was to focus on that 10 to 6.
Yeah.
Make it a clear vision. I think, I think the resolution blew that. But, but here's the question I would ask. Do you think, Roy City has a culinary water challenge?
Yes.
And I can't help but think that your enforcement on secondary water, when you find we do have people, and we do have people who are violating our, the problem, they're watering anytime they want.
Of course.
Should, in your opinion, just curious, should Roy City also have an ordinance that talks to the issue about ensuring that people don't waste our culinary water?
I think that's something you guys have to work out. You give them a, a number of gallons of water they can use, and anything above that, you just hit them hard with a B, and that's basically going to stop them from using it, maybe.
Yeah. And that, and that was the issue, and the Land of Honey has become a little more problematic because they don't have opportunities on secondary water, therefore they would take a pretty heavy fee increase. But you're right, I just, what we want to do is be lockstep with y'all to make sure that what we're doing collectively is going to address this water usage issue.
See, well, our code enforcer goes out, like he says, he has no idea that that's Roy culinary or Roy secondary.
Right.
So if you're on board with us, then it doesn't matter whose system it is, we're going to, we're going to warn them. And then if it gets to the third warning, then you guys are going to have to take care of how they're punished on the culinary.
And to do that, an issue would be is, shutting off waters, you indicated it's not an option.
No, and that's why I didn't propose an ordinance.
And it could be a fee issue. So you're right. So it really comes down to what you want to do. Andy, you okay with making at least a couple of modifications to this proposed ordinance change?
Yeah, and I think I'm about ready to make a suggestion here. Let me just, just give me 30 seconds.
And I like Chad's idea, and let's try to find out how big a problem it really is before we proceed to the next step.
Well, Mayor, why Andy's working that, something to address as well is just, we have a lot of green space as a city ourselves.
Right.
It's important that we maintain and, and, and follow these same, same guidelines. With that, we have aging infrastructure in the parks, and we might see a little bit more yellow grass there. And so I just, we need to talk about our expectations as a city as well, because oftentimes we get a lot of criticism of watering too much, and then we get a lot of criticism from being yellow or dry when they're recreating on our fields as well. So as long as we're all on the same, you know...
Can't have your cake and eat it too.
Exactly.
Well, I think, yeah, we made a comment, and Matt, you're absolutely correct, we made a comment a couple of weeks ago, that really comes down to, the fact is, we need to lead, and if Roy City is, is an enterprise that's going to basically do anything, then we need to show the residents before we hammer them that we're all, we're in compliance with our own policy. And Travis, I'll put you a little bit of a pickle, because what that oftentimes does is that if I get any complaints, they often comes because we're watering different times. And you've got a real challenge, because we only got so much water going into some of our parks, you almost have to run it into that 10 to 6 period, or it doesn't get watered.
We are doing our best never to water between 10 and 6. The challenge we have, and I would recommend if, if we do go on some water restrictions internally more than, I mean, we'll clearly follow the 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Well, the one thing I would say is, any sporting field is a potential liability issue if it's too dry. Non-sporting field areas, though, green space, for example, the city building, places that aren't playing baseball or soccer or different programming on, we'll follow whatever the city wants to follow, but like Matt said, I have a lot of pride pool people that do a really, really good job, and they have to know you're okay with the fact that it's not as green as it typically is, that we are watering significantly less, and, and it, it does carry a toll. You know, and, and we're okay with that, and this group's okay with that, but I just don't think it's something we can do on a sporting field right now, unless we want to take on that increased liability.
Yeah, no, we, we can't do something dumb here.
So maybe we put our, our beautification second priority to our sporting fields, is that what you're saying? Plus, you don't want your trees to die either and have to replant them.
You don't want anything to die, but I also understand it's an extreme tiny, and, you know, and turf is historically pretty tough. But I will say this, currently we do water multiple days a week, you know, I mean, right now we do.
Yeah.
Obviously, as it gets hotter, we add B programs and we add our water even more than that. As Matt said, with, with some aging infrastructure and heads that are designed to shoot 65 feet in the air and a little bit of wind, you can run into some stress spots and trouble. That being said, we'll do what we need to do to be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Well, I think you're great comments. We talked about air escape, we talked about a variety of other things in terms of how we do that, and our five-year strategic strategy plan, if you remember, obviously I think some of the situations that are climbing are going to force us to start expediting that move, and at the same time, we still need to provide public recreational opportunities. So the key here is we've got to find that direct balance, so.
I think our awesome city attorney found a way to clean up my redneck English and make it sound better, so.
I hope this is good, but I'll look at it a day later and go, oh.
If you'd like to tell us what you're thinking, we can...
This is on the spot, so.
So here we go.
What do you have in front of you? Do you have the comment, do you have the one with Joe's comments?
Unless they print it.
I do.
Okay.
I have comments.
I have both.
Okay, so if you can take a look at what Joe provided. We've got that, at the very top, Resolution 21-11, Resolution acknowledging, acknowledging the existence of drought conditions, and, and when we get to and, let's delete establishing, and we'll put recommends, and then we can leave in consistent water conservation measures for both secondary and culinary water usage, okay? And we'll, we'll go to that point.
Good.
We can delete the rest of it. Now, if we go to the now therefore at the very end, so now therefore be it resolved on this blank day of June 2021, that the Roy City Council, and we're going to leave in supports and encourages and strongly recommends, we'll delete the word enjoins. You can leave the rest of it in, except if you go down to all residents following, let's just say all residents follow, the conservation goals established by the water districts. Boom, period, oh, excuse me, water districts and take advantage of online services for weekly watering and recommendations for free water check evaluations. I think we should still have that in there. So if somebody can say, make a motion to approve the resolution with what I've just discussed.
Right.
We can make those changes to it subsequent to this meeting, and that'll be the resolution that can be signed by the mayor.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 21-11 with modifications as outlined in this meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. That was Jan and Ann. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Morgan?
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we got the resolution.
Mayor, yeah, can we, can we look at, you know, looking at what we're using?
Water.
Yeah. Where are we, where are we thought running amok on that? And also, what would enforcement cost us, or how could we look at joining with them on enforcement? So those are two things. Third was, what is their, what is their new policy or whatever that they're looking at on June 9? Those three would be three items that would be important as we look at an ordinance if we are indeed looking at an ordinance going forward.
Okay, so let's ask that. Any concerns, any comments about establishing an ordinance to go forward dealing with water conservation? Comments? Should we go ahead and pursue looking and putting a draft document together, or you think we should just do it based on fee increase?
I think I'd like to see what some of the information is first before we proceed with an, an ordinance specifically, because the fees may well take care of it if it's not a real...
Yeah, when your water bill triples.
You know?
That's a fine ending of itself.
Yeah, because this, once you have an ordinance, then, you know, is it for just this summer or the next, you know, summer?
The next year, are we going to be putting in pumps? Yeah, you know, I mean, there's, I'm old.
Right.
Okay, how would you like to proceed? What I'm sensing and hearing is, is that the council would like to gather some more information, particularly how big is the problem?
Ross just made a comment, but I didn't...
We have a fee schedule for every, when gallons of water is used, if they go too high, price goes up in increments of up to, so we already do that based on if they're using it too much, we're going to pay for it.
Yeah. If they're willing to pay for it, I mean, we can certainly raise those fees if we needed to.
One of the things I think is, is we work closer with Rod and his group to say, what's our problem? If they're seeing it, let us know, and then if we see that there's a problem that exists, then we adopt an ordinance at that time.
Do you have the right to stop by someone's house if they're watering in the middle of the day, to go up and knock on their door, or are we going to get...
Well, that's pretty...
I, I, it is interesting, because I used to work for Bountiful Water Sub Conservancy District, that's now Bountiful Irrigation. So I understand the city and the, the sub-district, and, and we just did well the work together that we communicated as a district in the city, and if we saw a problem, we passed it on to the other entity.
I think our best, our best deal is to, to be...
If we support them, they're our greatest advocate.
That's exactly right.
Well, we'll need to have a letter of intent, because there has to be some joint agreement between both the district and Roy City in terms of what we're asking you to do, Rodney. So I think in all fairness, we probably need to draft some type of, of an intent of what we'd like to see we can share, and then you need to, probably to your board, need to define whether or not that's something your board is willing, your district is willing to support, because it may add a little bit more, a little more requirement on you. But what I'm sensing is, gather more information, assess the size of the problem, then come back and make a distinction whether that can be resolved, whether by a fee increase or whether that should be involved some type of an ordinance. Is that what I'm hearing?
I like that.
Okay. I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
Would you like us, I just want to review what our current water rates are and see if you'd like us to look at that. So right now, they have their base fees, but then the residential water usage, this is bimonthly, so every other month, for the first 18,000 gallons, we charge them 88 cents per 1,000 gallons. For the next 12,000 gallons, we charge them $1.58 per 1,000 gallons. For the next 10,000 gallons, we charge them $1.81 per 1,000 gallons. And if they use in total over 40,000 gallons in that bimonthly usage period, we charge them $2.08 per 1,000 gallons. So it goes from 88 cents per thousand to 2... So it goes from 88 cents per thousand to $2.08 per gallon for those high users. So we already have our rates structured that the highest users pay for what they're using. So would you like us?
Here's what I, and by the way, if you do a comparison, and I've done this before, Roy City has some of the cheapest water rates anywhere around.
Why do you think the car washes come here and flog?
You're absolutely correct. Why they come to Roy? So the point is, is that in some cases, we're half the price, and I've looked at those numbers. And so the point I want to suggest is, is that a comparison would be good, you can surely look at that, but I'd truly like to see based on what I'm hearing is, how big is the problem? And so what I'd like to do is have some type of letter agreement, okay, with the district. If they've got someone out looking, and they're looking and finding, and we look and find, not because of purpose, but we can, let's take the next few weeks, figure out exactly how big the problem is, and report back to the council.
That'd be really helpful.
And then the council can make a decision. I will tell you, I will tell you, Roy City has cheap water. And to be honest with you, people can complain, but go somewhere else and look at what they pay for water compared to what they're paying in Roy. It's not going to say, well, you know what, if I have to pay double, it's sure going to be a lot less than it would be for somewhere else. So it's still going to be a good, great deal in Roy. So increasing the rates would be one solution, but it may not be the solution. And I do have a little concern with Land O'Honey. They don't have an option, and those lots may be very big, and they don't, they're probably working the edges right now, and it may force them into a really difficult situation if we double the rates. So let's see what we can do here in terms of what the data shows, okay? And then make a more informed decision. Having said that, Ross, I'd be interested in your comment. You run the water, okay? After everything you just heard about this, what's your feeling on this, okay?
I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of water, we're paying 200,000, what we use in buildings, so that's what.
I know.
100 acre feet, we're not using, we're still paying.
100 acre feet?
200 acre feet.
200 acre feet?
So, at the end of the day, we're paying 400, we use.
So either you use 100, 200 acre feet or 30 gallons, the bottom lines, we're paying the same price. And we're not turning on our four pumps. You don't turn your pumps on until when, about November?
Last year, we turned them on, first of December.
First of December.
We had to deal with the whole year.
And we've got some deep, deep wells that can pump a lot of water. So we have lots of water. Our four mothers and fathers did some really great things for Roy City in terms of water. The issue is, is that we just have some challenges, we got to decide what we want to address.
Yeah, because West Haven, he's taking our water, so one day we might not be able to give it to him.
Well, I think Matt and I had that conversation, and to be honest with you, Matt and I, he told me and confirmed, Roy City residents come first on all the water we're selling, and we sell a lot of water at West Haven. So we come, Roy residents come first. But it's an issue that we're facing today in terms of how we're going to address this issue, and we need to figure out how best to do that. And do it so it's right for the community, the whole community. So Rodney, thanks for the information, valuable information. This was, I personally think next year's going to be worse than this year. I hate to say that, but the trend, in my opinion, is moving in that direction. We just need to make sure we're, think of, put a process in motion. And I think the council's comments were good comments. Let's do this smartly rather than overreacting. And if you can help us, I don't know, Matt, who will be attending the meeting they're having on the 9th, but having maybe Ross, somebody from their team, or Art, us, or you and I, just to sit in and listen to the conversation of what Roy Water District could be a good idea. And to be honest with you, I think we need to have some type of a letter of agreement, that if we need to ask them to help us capture some information of what they're seeing going on in Roy, that we have some agreement that we can work with that information if they're willing to do that, okay? Okay, and Joe, I think, I think your comments about trying to get us watch step with Roy Conservative District is the right answer. And Andy, I think you've got it. I think what we just added will make this work for us, I think we've got a good resolution we can move forward with. So thank you, everybody. Any other comments dealing with?
So Rodney, I was just wondering, how much does it cost nowadays to hook up to your water?
If they're considered as a called an active block, which would be these ones that we're talking about that are on.
Really, I can actually walk off.
Yeah, as long as we have water, yes. Land O'Honey, we don't have water.
Oh, you don't have water.
Don't have water. Okay, good comment, thank you. Thank you for all the input on water. Okay, anything else we want to talk about dealing with water? Matt, comment?
I'm thirsty, can I?
Yeah.
I have.
Please, Brian, go ahead.
Related, but unrelated to water. Have we, have we moved the meter yet on amending our ordinance so that?
Accessory car washes are out.
Are out?
No, we haven't. We can't have an individual council member give us that recommendation, but we would need three council members to make a recommendation to do that, so.
I think we did that at a council meeting a while back ago.
We did talk about it in the council meeting a while back ago. I don't recall off the top of my head if we had three council members, but we did have the conversation, yes.
Well, I'm just, on the record, just saying, that would help both.
What do you want to do, Brian? What do you ask?
Well, I'm asking, right now, you've got car washes that can go up as long as they're considered an accessory to the property. Well, I'm saying, no, no, no more of that.
What do you want to do with them?
A car wash is a car wash, put them all in the same zone where the rest of the car washes are.
Okay.
We, if we, if I. I intentionally missed the fact that there's an accessory unit that can be a car wash. When we re-zoned where the car washes could be, none of us thought about an accessory car wash. So now you can put an accessory car wash anywhere you can put a gas station. And so what Brian and I talked about is, the only place you can have those is be in the same zone as the regular car wash.
Well, okay, so, and the premise by which we don't want car washes anymore is because?
Multiple things. Probably we have too many, we have plenty.
Okay, well, let me give you another example. There's an ordinance right now that basically says you can only have four tattoo shops in Roy. Four. There's a requirement that basically says that if you're going to put a vape or a smoke thing, it has to be so far away from a school, so far away from a church. Those are restrictions, but those restrictions are predicated because of the health issues. Help me understand.
So for the same reason we adopted an ordinance or a zone, the car washes were only in, what zone are they in?
Well, they're on the north side of Roy City.
That they're only in light manufacturing. Why wouldn't we extend that same thing to an accessory?
I'm just looking for the reason why. Is it because it's a health issue? Is it?
The citizen holiday gas station wants one down on.
Well, there are, there are.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just, all I'm saying, I'm just, it's a simple question, what's the reason? Because if our intent would be is restricting, okay, business, just to restrict business, then today's car washes, what's going to be tomorrow? Give me a reason, so I can at least.
So did you have the same argument when we changed the zoning for regular car washes?
Where was I?
You were there, I remember.
I know.
The conversation was, is because there were some comments on Facebook that people says we're now known as the car wash capital of the world, and because of that, you didn't want that statement.
It wasn't just Facebook comments, but.
And the council basically elected them to change the ordinance and move it. And they got that recommendation, I believe, from the planning commission, because they directed the planning commission to do that. And the planning came back to the city council, and the city council voted. I was here, I knew what happened, and I'm okay, that was a decision the council made.
And so what I'm saying is, we missed something as part of that zoning. I'm proposing we go back and add all car washes regardless of what type of car wash they are.
Okay, then let's.
For the same reason. Let's pull up the record and find out what our reasons were for.
Well, I think I know what the reasons for, because Warrens, basically as a private entity, we lost them, we couldn't stop.
No, all of our prime real estate was going to car washes.
And, and somebody.
Tell me, other than property tax, how much does the city make from a car wash?
Well, I can't help but think they're buying water.
We had no choice of Warrens who they were selling to.
I know that. But you got, I mean, we stack them on top of each other, right now, our main drag that we're trying to, whatever.
Okay, let's do this. The intent would be is not to make this uncomfortable. What I'm asking would be is, is to have a, just have a question here that simply says, what restrictions, what's the justification for basically restricting a business, an enterprise, to come in and put in a business? There's restrictions dealing with vape centers, and there's restrictions dealing with tattoo shops. They'll seem to be driven more by health. If those, if you don't think that's an issue, let's change that ordinance, because I guarantee we can bring a lot more vape centers in, well, we can't, that's a state issue. But you can bring a whole lot more tattoo issues in if they want to have a business.
Mayor?
When you want.
We want to listen to our constituents, and that's what our constituents are saying, is we have too many car washes, we need to hear that.
Okay, so here's what we're hearing, and Andy said it. Council, we have two council members that basically says we need to change the ordinance to suggest is, any, any car wash now has to be moved into a little patch of ground that's on the north end of Hinckley. Any of the other three council members? Would you care if you want to do that? Then we'll basically have them draft up, the planning commission to draft up an ordinance and present it back to the council. But I need a third council member to support it.
So do we have numbers? I mean, I hear people saying that we have more than everyone else. Do we have numbers that says Roy has a lot more? Are we, are we basing?
We did at one time when we passed the original zoning ordinance.
I mean, are we basing this on a prejudice of sorts?
It's not Facebook comments.
You know, I mean, you know, because some people say we only have one type restaurant, but I don't know.
We just stuffs out. If we have too many, I mean, why wouldn't, why would they choose to have a business that's not going to be effective? You know, the market, I would think, to me, the market drives that, drives that a little bit. I mean, at one time, we had all orchards. Was that a bad idea?
I don't know.
You know, I just think the market drives what, what are, what will, we will support.
Because you can't wash your car in your driveway no more, it wastes water, so they encourage everybody to go to car washes.
Okay, so, council members, Wilson, Burrell, council member Jackson, does any one of you people want to basically direct the city planning commission to basically revisit, include then an ordinance adjustment that says all car washes? Here we go, so they're accessories or others, we need to have that ordinance reviewed and a new recommendation provided to this council?
I'm not.
Okay, I'm not hearing, okay, council member Saxton?
That's fine.
I'm just starting to wonder why we even passed the original resolution or the original zoning ordinance. Let's, let's just open them back up and let them fly. We have right now seven car washes, or 11 car washes in seven square miles.
I understand. I'm just saying is, I don't know where it stops. And if we're going to pick, we're going to pick businesses and says we don't want that business, then I don't have a problem with that. All I'm saying is, is that define exactly what you want, and let's get that changed. I'm going to get off this in a second, but council member Saxton, we talked about gambling, and I use the word gambling because they are gambling, okay? And when they basically come into the city, I said then, I said, if we do not want them, then let's pass an ordinance that basically says adult gambling is not legal in Roy. I'm okay with that, let's do that. But to this day, there is still not an ordinance that presented to the planning commission that's going to bring it to the council to do that. So if we're going to, if you're going to take these on, let's take them on because that's what the council says we want to do. But if you don't want them, then let's don't do this pick and choose what we think we want and we don't. Just say, this is what we want to do, how do you feel? And if I get three council members that basically says, let's do this, then we don't have three council members, let's not belabor it to death. That's the issue today.
Because I bring up the fact of, where was all this discussion when we made the ordinance change? We should have never made the ordinance change then if that's how people felt, so.
Interesting enough, you're going to find that the vote was five, it was unanimous to do that ordinance.
I know, that's, that's what my point, I don't understand what the difference, there's a difference today.
The difference would be is distinction between whether it's a full-time business or it's an accessory, that's the only difference. And one of those means is, is that, is that the main function of that business is to basically sell gas, do whatever they're doing, and a part of that business, much like that common sense up there, has got one stall where a car can drive through that common sense and get a car wash. That is the big difference, not like going down Mountain West or whatever is down here, it's got 26 stalls. It's a big business, and that was the distinction I think we walked into.
But it may determine whether you get a gas station or not.
Well, I.
So I would rather have it how it is.
Okay, well, there's, there's an opinion.
I agree.
Okay, but if any of you can decide to change your mind, and think I want to reconsider that, then please, all we need is three of you before we task them to go out there and present an ordinance, it's going to take some time, and bring it back, so we've got at least a majority to saying, let's do that right thing. Otherwise, if we did it today and bring it back, three of you are going to say no, and all that time and energy is wasted, and there's no reason to do that. Okay? Okay, thank you. Good conversation. Now, Matt, we do have the city manager's report, so please.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. As you guys have probably seen and know, the marquee outside, out front here has been down. It's a relay between the city computers, and for a while, we didn't realize it was down. Still updated it. Anyway, we're working on a fix with it. It's required to purchase new equipment for it, so we're just waiting on that to be done. So we just turned it off, it's been off for a little bit, but just wanted to make you aware of that, and that's why it's not on. Also, starting Monday, North Davis Sewer is going to be working on 5600 South and 2700 West. Unfortunately, from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., there's only going to be one lane on 5600 at 2700 West, and that's going to be for 30 days.
They're putting in a new manhole, and I did reach out to them and let them know that this was approved, and they reached out to the engineers, and they had a discussion back and forth, but I never did hear back that they decided not to do it.
And I think that if it's just the 2756, that's probably a good thing, but here's my question to you, and Joe, if you can, maybe you can get an answer to this. UDOT is going to, we're going, Matt and I have a meeting on Thursday, and we're going to sit down with the UDOT Region One Director, and we're going to lay out what's going to happen on the widening of 5600. They're going to crack open that entire road from the, from the south, from the west side of that by dock, all the way to 3500. If the sewer district is going to do what they did on the east side of that by dock, all the way up to 1900, they, they cut that road wide open and redid that piping. I guess the hard question would be is, would it be in the best interest then to delay that?
And that's what I asked them, I don't know why they're proceeding with the manhole, it's not doing the whole sewer line, it's just a manhole from my understanding. But I, Ross knows.
Their line actually turns right there at 27, it goes down 2700 over 6,000, so it doesn't go down.
Oh, it's not going the rest of the way down, so you all know what's going down 56?
That'd be why.
Okay, well, there's the expert, okay. Well, then again, Matt and I are going to get some dates and times in terms of when they're going to crack open 5600 and do the interstate, we hope to get all that information. I provided you a lot of questions, so look at that, and Rodney, I'll make this comment to you. They're going to, they're going to have an impact on you. This Interstate 15 interchange is going to hit the Roy Conservative District area, and it's bigger than Dallas. I'd strongly recommend, okay, and I'm going to talk to the region director about making sure they coordinate these developments, this interchange replacement with not only with not only the water districts, but also the school districts. We've got to make sure all the players around the table, because it's a big, big project. About $238 million project, so. Scheduled to start, we heard, 2023. So it's coming at us, we just got to make sure we do that. And to your point, if in fact you have water issues, anything that's, that's running under 56, man, this is the time to make sure that you're coordinating all that. So while the street is open, you can get all that done before they seal that thing out, okay? So, go ahead, anything else?
Just the last thing, as you know, the Aquatic Center opened over the weekend. Yesterday was quite busy, hit capacity, so very popular place. Going good though.
We're excited.
Good deal.
That's really a lot of fun, okay. Council, do you have anything you'd like to, anything you'd like to basically mention, talk about?
I just want to echo what Glenda Moore has been touting as far as the citizens of Roy saying, we have the best cemetery as far as what our, what our people did to prepare for Memorial Day. It looked beautiful. I, I don't think we're mirrored anywhere in the state on how, how nice ours looked. So thanks to our people that worked on that so hard.
Yes.
So maybe watered, I don't know.
Absolutely, it's beautiful, yeah.
There is no comparison.
I deserve none of the credit. I got a lot of great men and women that work for me, and they've worked really hard, take a lot of pride in the cemetery and all the other places. So I will pass on your kind words then.
Yeah, yeah, great comment.
And the parks are looking, look really good, too.
Yes. And Travis, I can echo what they said. We've traveled this weekend to cemetery after cemetery, by far, without exception. Your cemetery is in fact incredible, okay? And, and I don't have to read Facebook pages to understand that. I was there, I looked at, I walked it over. I am telling you, your people did an incredible job, okay? And the fact that the people, the public were making comments about it, I was awed. And to witness what I witnessed, and Diane, you were there, Ann, you were there.
I'll turn later.
I'm telling you, to look at the sea of, of those crosses and flags and the decorations and stuff, I'm telling you, it made our heart warm. Brian, you were there. That was a wonderful morning, Monday morning, to witness that and to see that cemetery and the condition it was in, it was incredible. So well done, a great job, great job.
Do we have any more of those, are those vouchers all, all gone for the dumps?
We still have some remaining in the utility department. Last I checked, do you know the number by a chance? We still have quite a few.
Okay, have somebody ask me.
Have they been well received?
Yes, very well received. People are very happy with them.
Perfect. I just have one more thing, council, in your inbox. Sometimes I get letters. I get texts, I get emails, I even get some interesting phone calls. But on occasion, I do get letters. And the letters are directed to the mayor and the city council. And I don't put that on a little tag to route it to you like I used to do in my old days. What I'm going to do is, if I get one that's tasked to, to us, then I'm going to make a copy of it, and I'm going to put a copy of that in your box. You need to read them, okay, if you have time. Some of them are a little, some are a little hard to read, others not so bad. But the bottom line is, is that you, you need to know that, that it's there. And I'll put them in there for you to read. It's good information as we deal with the challenges and issues. And some people just simply find, they're sending a letter to the city, and particularly to the mayor and city councils, one of the mediums by which they use. And so you have a right and an obligation to read those. And so you've got some, three of them, okay? I got a lot this week. Three of them, send your own box, okay? So you can collect the votes.
Thank you.
Anything else, council, you want to talk about? Anything else you have on your mind? Anything you'd like to see done? Any speed limits you'd like to see reduced or increased? I'm sure that we're...
I make a motion, adjourn.
Oh, wait, wait, I, I have to share this one thought with you.
There's a motion on the table. Sir, a second?
If I keep pressing this issue, Joe, if I keep pressing this issue, it's only because, Matt, Andy, Ross, you were there, Travis, we have seen sometimes when council members simply go direct, sometimes Ross directly to the department head and says, go put that speed button, I'll do it. Go change that stop sign, okay?
Go remove that calming circle.
Go remove that, and the point would be is, the law is clear. The power is in the council in this meeting. Anything you would like to see done, anything you think is important, you simply need three council members to support that, and that is done. And it's the obligation of the mayor and the city manager to make sure that we comply with your direction. This is the form to do that. Not while you're out there wandering around, talking with department heads. This is the time to do that, and we really want to give you that opportunity. So please take advantage of, if you see something that needs to be done, let's do it here, okay? So with that then, do I have a motion, Joe, to adjourn?